On, Madam Chair.
The Prince George's County Planning Board will now come to order. Before we get to the development review items, we have some administrative items today, and the development review items will start at 10:30. But this is the planning board's 28th virtual planning board meeting since March. And I do see, I just want to do a check, we have Vice Chair Bailey with us, we have Commissioner Washington with us, we have Commissioner Geraldo with us, and we're going to go ahead and get started. The first order of business for today, and I'll do my announcements after this, but the first order of business today is that we have a resolution under Commissioners Items. It is for the, it's thanking the Census Complete Count Committee. Is there a motion?
We will approve them, Madam Chair. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye, and I want to thank you again for your great leadership of the full count census.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. We did well this year, teamwork, teamwork. The second item that we have today is that we need approval of the minutes from the November 5th meeting, planning board meeting. Is there a motion?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Chair Bailey, seconded by Commissioner Washington. Vice Chair Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
The ayes have it for zero. The next item on our agenda is item 3C, we have a Plan 2035 five-year review. Adam Dodson?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, good to see you.
Thank you, you too.
See you, this way.
Yep, right.
Thank you. Okay, you can go ahead, thank you.
Good, thank you. Is it possible to get the presentation up on the screen? Thank you very much, and yes, thank you again, I'm very delighted to be able to share with you this first five-year review, a summary of the report that we've done. And if I may, just a few quick thanks before I start, I'd like to thank and acknowledge staff who were instrumental in making this happen, Thomas Lester, World Aid, from the Community Planning Division, Paul Patnold, from the Information Management Division, Ted Koalik, from Countywide, and of course, Dan Hartman and his publications team, including Carly Brockington and Rob Getz, and also a special thanks to Elena Perry. So with that being said, next slide, please. So just really quickly, I'll be going through a very brief background into Plan 2035, I'm sure you're more than familiar with it, I want to focus on how the growth policy performance has moved over the last five years. I'll then be going into a discussion about each of the indicators in Plan 2035, because that's how this report is structured, and that's where our focus is, and then a quick look at some of the recommendations the report is making, and then the next steps. Thank you, next slide, please. So Deputy Director Derek Boulage once told me that this is the most important map that the county planning department produces, and it's really just there for that fact now, the growth policy boundary indicating the separation of the rural areas and the rest of it, the county, which of course includes the established communities in the Bay, each of the local centers with the dots, and the diamonds of the regional transit districts, including the three downtowns of Largo, Prince George's Plaza, and New Carrollton. Next slide, please.
But I never got the fact that we have a supplement.
And that translated into these overarching growth management goals, which show the desired distribution of new dwelling units and new jobs throughout the life of Plan 2035, as well as indicative totals. And an important thing to note here is, again, at the bottom of this slide, it says that the goals are not designed to be applied to, and shall not be tested against individual development projects, but they are still our overall goals for distribution of new growth in the county. Next slide, please. And starting firstly with dwelling unit change, I'd like you to focus on the three highlighted boxes first. You'll see that the distribution of units in 2014 was, as shown there, with the majority being in established communities and only 4% in our regional transit districts. In the middle column, you'll see the desired distribution through the growth management goals, as shown on the previous slide, so really desiring a move to 50% of distribution of new units in the regional transit districts, 25% across local centers, and 20% in established communities. And then on the far right-hand side, you'll see the observed growth, and this is again just showing the new units and the distribution of those new units over the five years, 2014 to 2019. And you can see the difference between that column and the left-hand column, a shift from 4% distribution of existing units in 2014, now 25% of all new units in regional transit districts, shows that there's definitely a strong application of that growth management policy, and it's really starting to show dividends, and you can see it matches nicely across all of those center classifications. Next slide, please. Slightly different way of showing the job numbers change, and the interesting thing to note here is that data was only available up to 2017, at the time the report was finalized. And so what we've shown here is the change, the increase in primary jobs in each of those centers, and just another thing to note, that the local centers are divided between the local transit neighborhood and campus centers and the town centers, so those two rows sum to the local centers, they're not added to the local centers, they sum to the local centers total above them. And again, a relatively positive story, especially given that it was only three years of data available. And next slide, please. So I want to go through each of the indicators, this is obviously just a highlight table, that all the details are in the report, and I'll be giving you some examples as we go through this presentation. The first piece of good news to note is that I will have to show you two slides showing you the indicators that are traveling in the direction that the plan desired, and only one slide showing the negative direction. The other thing to note here is that, obviously, sometimes the direction of travel that we like to see is negative, so we want to see a decrease in commercial vacancy rates and a decrease in crime and foreclosure rates, and we've seen all of those things, and we want to see an increase in agricultural land preserved, an increase in bike and ped facilities constructed, et cetera. So although the arrow may be up or down, if that's the direction that we wanted it to go in, then of course, it's a positively performing indicator. Next slide, please. And this is the second such page of positively performing indicators, a couple of things to highlight here include a decrease in the households burdened by housing costs, and a decrease in the poverty rates and unemployment rates, with an increase in the regional share of employment and LEED certified buildings as well. Onto the next slide, please. And this is the one slide showing either neutral performance, because either there hasn't been much data available, or there just hasn't been much change, or negative performance, and I want to pull out a couple of points here. With the commercial versus residential tax base, that indicator is asking us to have an increase in commercial tax base occur, if you like, more quickly than an increase in the residential tax base. So it is important to note that we have had an increase in the commercial tax base over the last five years, however, it hasn't grown as rapidly as the increase in the residential tax base, and consequently, it's seen as a negatively performing indicator. Household net worth or wealth, there was an issue there, we discovered that the indicator that we had to use was a proxy indicator, which was simply net property value, and obviously, property value is only a portion of a household's net worth, and if you're not a homeowner, it's zero of your net worth. So we'll be making a recommendation to look at different ways of recording household net worth or wealth, to make it match more closely with what we think the indicator was trying to show, rather than simply whether the value of your property is risen. And next slide, please. This is just a quick highlight, really, for like, of the methodology we used when we went through the indicators. Each of the eight plan elements in Plan 2035 has an overarching goal, and it contains policies and strategies. So we wanted to review each of the indicators against those element goals, policies, and strategies, and really evaluate whether there was a strong link between them. Most indicators do relate strongly to the policies and goals, and so we were looking to see what actions we've taken against each policy, to see how they correlate to the performance. So essentially, we asked, are we doing what we said we would do, and does it appear to be having a positive impact? So all through the report, you can see a commentary that states, you know, several actions have been taken per Plan 2035, and they do appear to be having an impact on the performance of the indicators. We also wanted to look at the opportunity, whether we needed to revise any of the existing indicators, and I already mentioned that whether we can match the data that we have with the existing indicators, or whether we might need to revise the indicator, so that we can show different level of performance, such as with the commercial versus residential tax base, do we want to have a single indicator that shows the increase in commercial tax base while still keeping the comparator with the residential, because then at least that makes it clear that we are still growing our commercial tax base. And we also looked to the opportunity to perhaps create new indicators, and just as a headline, in one of the areas where we felt this might be valuable, would be against the community heritage, culture, and design element, because it transpired that there really weren't any indicators that help show the performance of the policies, strategies within that element. So it's an option in the recommendations to create some new indicators. Next slide, please. I just want to go through some of the examples in a little bit more detail. I mentioned earlier that we'd seen a 10% decrease in the number of households burdened by housing costs, and as it says there, that's the number of households that spend more than 30% of their income on housing. And just to clarify what the map shows, the sort of orangey areas that show a 60%, that's not they're spending 60% of their income on housing, it's that 60% of households in that census tract are spending more than 30% of income on their housing. So it's still not a good statistic, but it's perhaps not quite as alarming as showing an area that's spending that much money on their housing. And you can see the distribution across the county, we've put the regional transit districts on there for a bit of reference for you as well, and obviously, you know, we can look at that in more detail, or I can take questions afterwards, but that's one of the means of displaying the data. Next slide, please. We were also able to produce some graphs, and this one just focuses on just the regional transit districts, and looks at the unemployment rates within those, we've got the statistics in the report for all of the local centers as well, but just for sort of speed, if you like, we're showing you the regional transit district performance here. A couple of things to note, might be the great level of change at National Harbor and the not-so-distinct level of change at New Carrollton Metro. One might suggest that with National Harbor, for example, over the three-year period, there was a significant increase in the number of new dwellings, all of which would have been occupied by employed people, because of the type of dwellings that they are, and consequently, you would expect to see perhaps a reduction in the unemployment rate in that area, because of the influx of employed people into that area. Next slide, please. Another really important element here is the commuting patterns, and this is just work trips, and perhaps just to clarify, none of those arrows show a specific direction, so we're not saying that 254,000-plus movements are into Northern Virginia, we're just saying they're starting in Prince George's County, moving out of the county, they could just so easily be going into Anarundel, Montgomery, or the district, but it just gives you that statistic that shows exactly the number of journeys that occur. 106,000 occurring people who start and finish their work commute within Prince George's County, which is of course something we'd like to see, and see more of, as well as the attraction of people working in our county from outside. Next slide, please. Related perhaps to the success in keeping more people living and working in Prince George's County, is this potential for this increase we're seeing in annual vehicle miles traveled? I think we know the makeup of the county in terms of its transit accessibility, perhaps if you used to drive a short distance to the metro and get that into developer, into the district, whereas now you're starting and finishing your job in the county, you may be adding a few extra miles to your daily trip. It's not a significant increase, but it is a slight increase, and obviously, the indicator would like to see that going in the other direction. Next slide, please. Just a quick headline of some of those recommendations, really, they're bundled into two main fields, one is looking at evaluation and monitoring, and the other is looking at those plan elements and some of those potential for amending or adding to indicators. So really, one thing we found is that it's going to be very important for us to be able to coordinate data collection, to make sure that when we're looking at annual monitoring, we have data which, sounds obvious, but data which can be monitored annually, data which is collected annually, and it's collected at the scale that we want it to be collected at, so if we need it to go down to census tract level or to district center level, then it can do, rather than just be a countywide statistic. The monitoring will help us prioritize strategies for implementation. One really obvious example is that we know that the recommendation to bring about new zoning movements is clearly well underway, but there are other strategies which perhaps we need to use the monitoring to show that if we focus our attention on those strategies, we'll see more improvement in the indicators, and that comes back to pulling the relationship between indicators and strategies. And another important recommendation is to complete the work that we started on the development pipeline, understanding what's in the development pipeline for the county. And as mentioned earlier, I think it's a strong recommendation to add new indicators to land use, community heritage, crock from design, and public facilities elements, because that will help us understand the performance and really get some more, get those indicators moving in the right direction. Next slide, please. Just the next steps, and we expect to schedule a presentation to the Planning, Housing, and Economic Development Committee sometime in the fall, possibly winter now, and then to add additional monitoring data to the Plan 2035 website, and if you haven't yet checked out the dedicated Plan 2035 website, there was a link in your packs, I believe. Then of course, rather than just have this report sit there with some recommendations, we want to actually look at implementing them, so we'll have to be coming up with an action plan, see how we can really bring that focus to improving the indicators even more, and then we'll be finalizing that, and looking at how we set about doing annual monitoring into the spring of next year. Next slide, please. Just some of the key contact information, and certainly a reminder for me to thank Kip Reynolds, our division chief, for the support she gave during the entirety of this project. And that's the end of the presentation, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dodson. So I noticed this before, and then when you actually said it too, that you're going to present to PHED, how do we arrange that? Because that is likely to be winter, you know, maybe December by now, or if not January?
Yep, we will be in touch with Councilmember Blairus's office to arrange a date for that.
Okay, thank you. And then I was looking at, first of all, thank you for a wonderful presentation, we need to have this information. And I was also looking at Slide 13. So we're starting to have, you know, more jobs within the county that are filled by residents of the county, so we have the 106, but if you put that together with the 174,685, which are filled by non-residents of the county, we have a lot of jobs in the county, that's 281,000 plus, and 415, actually. And so that's good, that we have, we're creating more job opportunities in the county, so that's very, very good. So, you know, I might have some more, but, and the unemployment rates too, that was good, but let me see if our board has any questions of you or comments. I'll start with Madam Vice Chair.
Well, Madam Chair, first of all, thank you, thank you for the report and the presentation. You talk about creating more jobs, and I know this was done probably prior to the pandemic. Do, will we see any impact on that as we look to the future?
I am sure, we've been having discussions with David Ainucci at the Economic Development Corporation, and you're absolutely correct, this report was finalized before the pandemic really took hold, and I don't think there's any doubt that there will be an impact, especially around service industry jobs.
That's kind of what I was thinking, and probably some other ones as well, thank you.
That's it for you? Okay. Okay, Commissioner Washington?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Dodson. I just have one question, and it's actually also on Slide 13. I was curious about the 99,000, where it talks about people who neither work or live in the county, what is that? They're just traversing across the county to get to wherever they're getting? Is I'm sure I'm understanding that correctly?
Absolutely, yes, that is correct, the data was able to model those that travel through the county to get from point A to point B, but they don't work in the county, so they might start in Anarundel and end up in Montgomery County, or, you know, whichever direction they are, they are passing through the county as part of their daily commute.
Okay, and we track that, why? Because they might make a stop in the county to make a purchase or something like that? Or?
It goes into, I don't think we have any transportation colleagues on the call, but it goes into the overall sort of level of service for each of the roads that we have, so it's important to know all of them in the county.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, so it gets factored in as we do those preliminary plans and what have you for APF, but also, interestingly enough, it comes up from the elected officials a number of times, that we have that many pass-throughs, and they've actually contemplated different measures for trying to deal with that, you know, whether, I know they can't tax them, but you know, it's very, very frustrating to see that large group of people going, passing through. But anyway, much to their chagrin, it looks like, Ms. Reynolds, did you want to say something on that, or, because I see you just popped on visibly, yeah?
Yes, thank you. I just, part of that is probably coming from Washcock Metropolitan Regional Council governments, through their transportation modeling, through the regional network, they have a lot of data, and we're getting some of that data through our cooperation with them. We've been coordinating with them on their metrics also. So I believe that's probably from that modeling effort from TRB.
Great, thank you, Kip, Adam, I appreciate it. And Madam Chair?
Thank you.
Number of questions?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Geraldo? You're muted, you're muted, you're muted.
I want to thank Mr. Dodson for the presentation. Can we go to Slide 9, please? I was wondering, do we have any reason why we know there's a neutral performance on the fast food, mode split, and the waterway, no change?
If I recall correctly, the waterway health, we actually have some missing data, there was data from the base, there was data from the base year, but there was no data following 2014, so we just couldn't report on it either way, I'm afraid.
Where would we get that information for the waterway?
We're working with the Department of Environment to find out when the next update is available, but at the time of publishing the report, there was nothing available, but we are working with them to make it available.
Okay, and there's been no change with respect to the fast food or the mode split?
Mode split was reporting a zero change in terms of percentage, it was steady at 21%, and fast food, I'm just quickly scrolling up in my report, just to make sure I get the response for you. Yeah, again, really, a lack of available data with this one, so that we had to use a proxy to reflect the change in square feet of non-fast food per capita, rather than the number of, I think the original indicator was to ask the number of new restaurants which were not fast food, but we're using a proxy, which was number of square feet, and there's been no change.
Okay, so when you say lack of available data, do we have things in place to get that data for the next one?
That is one of the recommendations, is to look at what data is missing, and see if we need to bolster available data to keep the indicator as is, or if we need to change the indicator to match the available data, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you very much, I have no further questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, that seems to conclude our questions, so thank you so much, Mr. Dodson, we really appreciate it, and the information is very helpful, I think this is a keeper, I didn't mean you, Mr. Dodson, you too, but I mean, I mean the information is a keeper, so we look forward to the presentation before PHED as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, one other question. Could we look again on the same page nine? How do we determine the obesity and overweight? Do we get that information from the Health Department?
Keep me here.
Oh, she's gone.
No, I'm here. I'm just, I'm demonstrating, I'm demonstrating the 24%, but okay.
Yes, the sources of all the data are at the bottom of the report, and if I just get that for you really quickly.
That's okay, I'll find it.
It's in the final table, at the very end of the report, in the appendix, it's Table A1, and I'll be there in two seconds.
Okay, so I'm, and Madam Vice Chair, I'm turning this over to you for a second, because we have four minutes before we go to development review, I have, so you can take over from here.
Thank you, thank you. I would love to.
From the County Health Department.
Okay. Okay, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, you're on.
I have one further question, Madam Vice Chair. What have we determined, looking again at Slide 9, have we determined the correlation between the question, the figures that Vice Chair Bailey was talking about under the obesity and overweight to the fast food restaurants?
I think, I think there's no doubt that, you know, obesity and proximity to fast food has perhaps been the only easy option, there's definitely a strong correlation there. Many of the strategies in the plan seek to increase walkability and bikeability, for example, and other strategies looking to improve trails and connectivity, so really, in tandem with the statistic about fast food availability, is the availability of easy access to.
Self-recreation.
And recreation, too.
And recreation, okay.
Those are the two parts that we've been looking at.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Seems like we have about two minutes prior to our session today, so we'll take a two-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Back in session, we just finished our administrative items, and before we commence our development review items, where we have a lot of attendees who've just signed up, I just want to make sure we, first of all, I see we have our planning board, we have Madam Vice Chair Bailey, we have Commissioner Washington, and we have Commissioner Geraldo, present and accounted for, we have our attorney, David Warner, we have our Chief of Development Review, James Hunt. In the room with us, we have our Planning Director, Andre Chekley, we have our Planning Board Administrator, Jessica Jones, we have our technical hearing writer, Marie Proctor, and we have our senior planning technician, Kenny Flanagan, holding down the fort with the PowerPoint and slides and what have you, and of course, we have our visual media specialist, Ryan Cron, taking care of all these media and visual issues and technical challenges as well. So I am Elizabeth Hewlett, Chair of the Prince George's County Planning Board, and the planning board is now in session again for its 11-12-2020 planning board meeting, and this is the 28th virtual meeting since March. During these continued challenging times, we remain committed to promoting a safe environment for our staff, for our stakeholders, for our applicants, and for our public, as we continue to propel the operations and business of Prince George's County forward. I want to take a moment to remind everyone of the planning board procedures. Speaker preregistration and pre-submission of comments and exhibits is required. All participants must preregister, and all materials or exhibits, if any, must be submitted by 12 noon on the Tuesday before the planning board meeting, as shown on the screen, as announced in weekly meetings, as posted on our website, and clearly stated in bold red on our published weekly planning board agenda. Registered speakers and presenters connecting through a computer, tablet, or smartphone can join the meeting with the link provided via email from the planning board office. Online registered participants may be prompted to install GoToMeeting software in order to participate. Registered speakers may also listen or participate in the meeting using a phone line with the call-in number provided via email. We ask all participants to mute your phones when not speaking, but please do not put your phone on hold. Of course, the public may continue to watch planning board meetings streamed live, or if you wish to become a person of record, you may sign up on the online web, using the online web form. Please see the screen for the instructions for all of the above. As always, we commence our planning board meetings with a moment of silence in honor of those individuals and loved ones throughout our community and our nation who passed away since our last meeting on November the 5th. First of all, the growing number of victims who succumbed to the widespread coronavirus, more than 10-point million cases, and 239,000 deaths in the United States, and yesterday was the ninth consecutive day of over 100,000 cases. So again, we want to lift these decedents and their families and loved ones in our thoughts and prayers, because these are loved ones, they may be your loved one, they may be my loved one, but they're certainly somebody's loved one, and it's very, very painful to see someone die of COVID, particularly if you can't get to the hospital to be with them. So we really, really, really want us to embrace them and keep them in our, and the families in our thoughts. Within Prince George's County, Denita Simpson. Within Prince George's County, Denisa Simpson was a community advocate and director of the Adelphi Langley Park Family Support Center, and Bishop Harry Jackson, Senior Pastor of Hope Christian Church in Beltsville, succumbed as well. Throughout the nation and the world, the nation mourns the iconic Alex Trebek, age 80, host of the game show Jeopardy for three decades. He succumbed to pancreatic cancer, ironically, during Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, after a valiant struggle where he remained positive and kept on ticking throughout his challenges and treatments and, and pain. By the time of his death, Jeopardy was one of the most popular and long-lasting programs of its kind in history. Elsa Raven, age 91, an actress who appeared in Black Back to the Future and Titanic. Norm Crosby, age 93, comedian, so further buttresses my theory that comedians tend to live longer, comedy is essential. Bert Velasco, age 38, passed away in Richmond Hotel Room where he was required to quarantine prior to starting his new movie role. Jim Ramsden, former congressman from Minnesota who championed mental health and recovery issues. Candido Camero, age 99, pioneering Cuban percussionist and known as the father of Latin jazz. Tommy Heinsohn, legendary Boston Celtics player and coach who won 10 NBA titles and was the 1973 NBA Coach of the Year. Ken Spears, TV writer, producer, and co-creator of the popular Scooby-Doo cartoon. Nancy Doach, winning coach for the New York Liberty in the WBNA's inaugural 1997 game, and also assistant coach to two U.S. women's teams that won the Olympic gold. Titus Davis, a 27-year-old former NFL wide receiver from, who died from a rare form of kidney cancer. Lawrence Clayton, Broadway star, Dreamgirls and The Color Purple. And finally on my list is Lucille Bridges. Lucille Bridges was a sharecropper and a mother who was determined to get her daughter a proper education. She was the mother of the now-famed Ruby Bridges, who as a six-year-old was famously accompanied by the U.S. Marshals as she reported for public school in New Orleans, navigating through a crowd of noisy, rebellious, threatening segregationists chanting "2, 4, 6, 8", "We don't want to integrate." But she championed on, and she was just amazing. I saw her on the news the other day, the Ruby, but anyway, her mom, who was determined to get little Ruby, her education just passed. So we want to remember her as well. And of course, we extend our deepest sympathy to any of you who may have suffered a loss of a loved one as well. Please know we hold you close to our hearts and extend our deepest sympathy. May we have that moment of silence now. So again, it's the month of November, it is American Heritage, American Indian Heritage Month. We, we just had a fabulous American Indian Heritage Celebration virtually this past Friday, replacing the annual live one that we have every year, which is always fantastic, but we embrace diversity at the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. It's who we are, and it's who we are in Prince George's County, because we are all Prince George's County proud, Prince George's proud. It is Lung Cancer, Pancreatic Cancer, and Stomach Cancer Awareness Month, and Epilepsy Awareness Month. It is National Caregivers Month. Many of us have served in that role or are now serving in that role of caregivers. It's very, very hard, very challenging. We do it out of love. And I know for myself, if I had to do it all over again, I'd do it in a heartbeat. But I know many of you are doing it, but it's imperative that we recognize the struggles of caregivers and make sure that caregivers take care of themselves first. It's just like they say on the airlines, you know, put your mask on first. So it's imperative that we recognize caregivers. It is National Adoption Month, many, we thank everyone who's adopted children, and, and those of you who may be considering it, go for it. It is Aviation History Month, Military Family Appreciation Month. We celebrated Veterans Day. We honor our veterans, I said this last week, in preparation for Veterans Day, but we really do honor our veterans and our military, and our military families, particularly in Military Family Appreciation Month. It is No Shave Ember Month, No Shave Ember Month, and as of last week, nobody was adhering to that except for Kenny Flanagan over here, who's not shaving his beard. Okay, and of course, it is National Gratitude Month. And I'm saying, in these extraordinarily challenging times, and it's just getting, it's dragging on, it's, it's, this is very tough on everyone, going through these respective, there are many, many challenges that we're facing now, not the least of which is this pandemic. But the pandemic has caused many other challenges, and we're struggling, we're struggling emotionally, we're struggling, struggling in every conceivable way. I will tell you that one good way to deal with this is to count your blessings, check your plus column, and remember this in the month of November, which is National Gratitude Month, but I would submit you remember this every single month of the year. For the foodies and us, it's Georgia Pecan Month, Banana Pudding Lovers Month, and my favorite, National Peanut Butter Month. November 12th, on November 12th, 1922, Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority was founded, and I'm going to do a personal shout-out to congratulate, to State's Attorney, Ayesha Braveboy, to say congratulations. And in 1975, on November 12th, the iconic Supreme Court Justice, William O. Douglas, retired after serving 36 years on the nation's highest court, and still holds the record as the longest-serving Supreme Court Justice. He authored many key Supreme Court decisions, such as the landmark Brady versus Maryland case, which established that the prosecution, you see this on Law &amp; Order and stuff all the time, that the prosecution must turn over all exculpatory evidence to the defense. So if you find something exonerating the defendant, if the prosecutor has it, they must turn that over to the defendant, I mean, to the defense. He was also known as Eye Descent Douglas because of his equally significant and profound descents, similar to the epic descents of the late notorious RBG. And finally, on this day, 2018, former First Lady, Michelle Obama, published her fascinating memoir, The Coming. And November 12th is also known as Chicken Soup for the Soul Day. I would submit that's one way of healing your soul, it's certainly not the only way, but chicken soup ain't a bad idea. So with that, I will turn to the Planning Department Largo Wayfinding Study. Take a moment to complete the online survey, survey to help guide Largo Town Center's growth into a vibrant mixed-use center, and see the screen for the link or visit pgplanning.org. Slide number two, the Planning Department, along with the Department of Parks and Recreation and Prince George's County Arts and Humanities Council, are conducting a study to learn more about how you connect with the arts and cultural expressions in Prince George's County. And they are extensive and phenomenal, not so much during this COVID environment, but typically they are. So take 10 minutes to complete the online cultural participation survey, and visit the study's website to learn more about the project, view of presentation, and hear ideas shared at the virtual kickoff meeting. You can see the screen for the links. Trot for a Turkey is back. So every year, we do this Trot for a Turkey through Watkins Park on the Saturday before Thanksgiving. And we partner with UCAP, United Communities Against Poverty, to pay a registration fee, although people can sponsor, and we have a number of fabulous people who have sponsored over the years. And that enables us to give, to buy and, and present and package and distribute turkeys to many, many families in need, and I believe that there'll be far more families in need during this year. So share the gift of giving and help families in need by running or walking through the beautiful dazzling Winter Festival Lights at Watkins Park on Saturday, November 21st. There will be five staggered, staggered, staggered socially-distanced time slots beginning at 5:00 p.m. There are very limited spaces, so, and it's a 3.1-mile course, I've done it, you can still do it at your own pace, I let the fast people go first. It is only a $22 registration fee, we're reducing it, and you can see pgparks.com for more information. And then finally, we congratulate, special heartfelt, humongous congratulations to Dr. Charlene M. Dukes, who is the eighth and first woman president of Prince George's Community College. She was the recipient, this past week, she was the recipient of the J. Franklin Bourne Bar Association's highest award, which is the Wayne K. Curry Spirit of Excellence Award. She received this award for countless well-deserved reasons, not the least of which was her transformation of a very good community college to a world-class college, and creating the first middle college, high school, admitted college school in the state of Maryland, where, where high school students take college courses, and by the time they graduate, they graduate with their high school diploma and their associate's degree. She, and plus, she is the single largest individual contributor to the foundation at the Prince George's County Community College. She's done so much, I can't recite everything, but great big congratulations to Dr. Charlene M. Dukes. And finally, we thank each and every one of you, because we really do appreciate your working with us, your flexibility, your cooperation, and above all, your support, as we continue to work through and navigate our planning functions in a very safe fashion during this no-longer-new normal. We really ask that you take every effort to stay safe, to look out for your families, to look out for one another, to reach out for the, to those people in your life, to stay strong, to stay resilient, to stay woke, and never, ever, ever lose hope as we strive to get through these challenging times together. And remember, it's National Gratitude Month. So with that, I'm going to turn to our consent agenda. Is there anyone here to oppose or speak on, or any Planning Board member who wishes to speak on items 4B through 4D on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, after consideration of the record for items number 4B, 4C, and 4D, I move adoption in the staff findings and approval of those items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendation of staff. Second?
We have a motion and a second by Madam Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Washington. Madam Vice Chair?
I.
Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I.
The I's have it 4-0, thank you. The next item is item eight, which is Preliminary Plan 4-19024, Calm Retreat. We do have a request for continuance, I just want to make sure we have the requisite folks online. Mr. Severs?
Yes, ma'am, present.
Wait a minute, where are you, Mr. Severs? Okay, there's No Shave Ember, okay. Mr. Tedesco?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and I'm failing miserably compared to Mr. Severs.
Yes, you are. And you did it on Halloween, too, but okay. Okay, so you're, Mr. Sun, I don't know, Mr. Sun's not needed for this right now. So we have no one else, oh, Mr. Villegas?
I'm not sure he's with us this morning, Madam Chair, he's, he's with us, so.
No worries, no worries. So we have a request to continue this until December the 10th, 2020. I don't know that we have, we have the letter in our backup as, the request for continuance has written, I don't know if you need to say anything, because Mr. Tedesco or Mr. Severs, if you feel pressed, you can say something, otherwise we'll entertain a motion.
No, ma'am, nothing bad.
Okay, that's a good answer.
Move approval, Madam Chair. Second?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the request for continuance until December 10th, 2020. The motion was by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey?
I.
Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I.
The I's have it 4-0, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Special Permit 200001, Chase ATM at Riverdale Park Station. Mr. Hurlbut, are you on?
Present, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Taub, are you on?
I am, Madam Chair, thank you, good morning.
Good morning. Okay, and that concludes my speakers list. So, Mr. Hurlbut, you're on.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Board. For the record, I'm Jeremy Hurlbut with Urban Design Section. The project before you is Special Permit SP-20001, Chase ATM at Riverdale Park Station. The applicant is seeking to permit a walk-up ATM use and amend the mixed-use town center or MUTC design standards to allow a reduction in the ground floor transparency. Next slide. The site is located in the northern portion of Prince George's County, Planning Area 68, Council District 3. Slide 3, please. Typically, the site is located in the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Woodbury Street and 45th Street. Next slide, please. Don't map shows the subject property is in the MUTC zone. Next slide. The overlay map shows that the subject site does not have an overlay on it, but the overall development is located within, or portions of the overall development is located in the aviation policy area 6, shown here in green. Next slide. The aerial shows the subject property, which is known as Parcel B, which is improved with a mixed-use building, and is surrounded to the north, or at the top of the slide, with, by Woodbury Street, with single-family attached dwelling units and commercial uses beyond, and moving clockwise to the east, 46th Street, and commercial uses beyond, and to the south by Van Buren Street and commercial uses beyond, and to the west by 45th Street and commercial uses beyond, all located within the MUTC zone and part of the overall Riverdale Park Station development. Slide 7, please. Plan shows that the site is flat and fully developed. Next slide, please. US Route 1 is shown here in green, which is a master plan collector and is one block to the west of the subject site. Next slide. This slide shows where the proposed ATM is to be located, highlighted in blue on the western elevation of the building. The departure requested is for the building opening standard 1, to allow less than 60% transparency on the street outside of 45th Street. The ATM results in a decrease of 1.32% in the transparency along the western wall, Building 4, and will not substantially impair the plan. The location of the proposed ATM is shown here in green in relationship to the overall Riverdale Park Station development. Next slide. This application, as stated before, is to allow for an ATM which is a special permit use. The ATM will be located on the western facade of Building 4 on Parcel B, and a departure standard to decrease the ground floor transparency of the building is requested. The applicant removed the ground floor window and inserted an ATM, proposes a projecting sign and canopy over the machine, which, under, which is under review in an indicated director-level detailed site plan that covers the site improvements and architectural changes, and which is pending approval of this special permit use. The Urban Design Staff recommends the Planning Board adopt the findings in this report and approve SP-20001 with the requested departure. Subject to the conditions contained in the staff report, this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlbut. So let's see if there's any questions of you at this time. Okay, Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, no questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Taub?
Thank you, Madam Chair, good morning. I'm good morning to the members of the commission. For the record, Larry Taub with O'Malley, Maughlin, Gilmore. I want to first thank Mr. Hurlbut for working with us on moving this forward. I also want to thank Ms. Cosack and Mr. Hunt for really helping to move this ahead. I know it appears to be a very relatively small item, but it's actually very important to chase back, and we really appreciate the cooperation of the staff in helping us move ahead, and also the Planning Director allowing the resolution to be approved today as well. We have no. well. Uh, we have no, um, comments. We, we entirely approve with the, of the, uh, staff recommendation, including all conditions and respectfully request that the planning board adopt the findings and recommendations of the staff and approve, uh, this application subject to the noted conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so let's see if there are any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, there are no questions. And Mr. Taub, I see you got with the no shade member. I can't see Mr. Hurlbut 'cause, um, he's, he's not close enough to the camera. Okay, well, it's okay, so he's not, but okay. Um, but anyway, so there are no questions of you and there's no other speakers, um, unless, Mr. Hurlbut, you have anything else to add at this point, we'll enter...
I am trying.
We will, we will entertain a motion.
I try very hard.
We, we will, and we, I've seen you over the years, Mr. Taub, so, but okay, we'll enter, uh, a motion. We'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I, I move that we, uh, adopt the findings of staff's report and approve SP dash two zero 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 one, along with the requested departure, uh, as well as the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report. Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington and seconded by, um, Commissioner Geraldo. Um, Madam Vice Chair?
But I?
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Um, thank you. We also have the accompanying resolution, which is item nine. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chair. Second?
Okay. Okay, this is everybody wants, I just have to pick one. Um, okay.
Pick one.
Okay, so I think, Mr. Commissioner Geraldo, we're gonna get, did you make the motion on this one too?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna give it to you this time. So, motion by Commissioner Geraldo, seconded by Commissioner Washington. Um, Madam Vice Chair?
But I?
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Would I?
The ayes have it four zero. See, that's what happens when everybody's just anxious to approve this ATM. Okay, thank you, stay safe.
Thank you very much, rest in well. Thank you.
Take good care.
You too, thank you.
The next item is item seven, which is preliminary plan of subdivision four dash two zero zero one one, ELP DC. Uh, Mr. Diaz Campbell?
Present.
Mr. Lynch?
Present.
Uh, Mr. Salino?
Present.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Lenhart?
Present.
Mr. Collinson?
Present.
Um, and then we have applicant exhibit number one, which is proposed revisions to the conditions and findings. And someone needs to turn off their mic 'cause we have, um, feedback. But we, we do have applicant exhibit number one, which is proposed, proposed provisions, revisions to the conditions. Uh, Mr. Diaz Campbell, you're on. And if everyone else can turn off their mic. Thank you. Mr. Diaz Campbell?
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Good morning.
For the record, I'm Eddie Diaz Campbell, senior planner with the subdivision intersection. Item number seven on the agenda is the preliminary plan subdivision for ELP DC four dash two zero zero one one. The subject project proposes 32 parcels for development of 3,240,000 square feet of industrial development. And, uh, you are, you have additional depth, but we see, so let's go on to, uh, next slide, please. Site is located in the southern part of Prince George's County within planning area eighty-five A, Council District Nine. Next slide, please. More specifically, the site is located at the existing northern terminus of Masewoman Drive, about zero point four miles north of its intersection with Cedarville Road. Next slide, please. The zoning map shows that the property is split between a heavy industrial or I-2 zone and a planned industrial employment park or act reason. To the west of the property is the Timothy Branch, with developments known as the Villages of Timothy Branch and the Mass Peak Business Park beyond. The Villages of Timothy Branch is residentially in development, while Mass Peak Business Park is a commercial shopping center, mixed-use transportation-oriented and light industrial. Through the style of the site is a powerplant in the I-2 zone. To the east of the site are train tracks belonging to the CFX Railroad, the property owned by the US government and the reserved open space zone beyond. Through the north of the site is the Brandywine Heights subdivision, consisting of single fairly detached drawings in rural residential setting. Next slide, please. The aerial photograph shows that the site is currently vacant. Also visible are the Timothy Branch and partially developed projects west of the site. The right-of-way from Masswoman Drive continues northwest of the site, however, the road has not yet been constructed in this area. Next slide, please. This photo shows another view of the site from an aerial perspective. This view is taken from the east. Next slide, please. The site map shows a precise topography consists of various artificial valleys and hills, belonging to the property's power use as a soil recycling center. The property will be recreated for coming proposed development. Next slide, please. Massa plant right-of-way map shows Masswoman Drive and arterial road passing through the site and continues to the northwest. In the mass of that transportation, a portion of Masswoman passing through the site is known as A-55, while a portion northwest of the site is known as A-63. This map also shows Mass Peak Business Drive, a major collector of the rest of the site, US 301 and existing freeway further to the west, the General Lafayette Boulevard, a major collector road which is further to the west from the site on this map. In the setting of the site, all these roads except the freeway are partially dedicated construction, but more right-of-way to be obtained in the future. Connecting all these roads is another portion of A-55, which extends away from the site to the west. This preliminary plan of subdivision proposes dedication of Masswoman Drive where it passes through the site. Next slide, please. Two critical intersections determined to be impacted by the development are shown by the yellow boxes on this slide and are further described in detail in the staff report. The analysis performed by staff found it inadequate at the intersection of Cedarville Road and Masswoman Drive, intersection mark two on this map. Therefore, staff recommends a traffic signal warrant study at this location in reference to the recommendation made in the out construction test study. Signal or other improvement will be installed of deemed warranted by operating agency. In addition, the applicant proposes to make improvements to the intersection of US 301 and Maryland 5 and the intersection of the Kendry Road and Cedarville Road, subject to concurrence by SHA and D5. The applicant proposes to utilize their Brandywine Road Plan B source construction of the improvements at these locations. Next slide, please. The preliminary plan shows 32 proposed parcels outlined in red, consisting of proposed exit areas shown in the primary management area as shown in the agenda. For the 32 parcels, 25 are proposed for development of warehouses, while the remaining 10 are to be dedicated to our Business Owners Association for Open Stores. Staff found that the project fails the four-minute travel time test for commercial development from the nearest fire and rescue station. As a result, staff is recommending that the applicant contact the county fire department to request a free incident emergency plan for the facility, as well as maintain extra safety equipment on site. Staff also found that one of the four existing parcels comprising the site, known as parcel six, is in water and sewer category five, feature community system. Parcel six is in the northwest part of the site. Pursuant to the 2018 water and sewer plan, properties in category five are ineligible for preliminary plan approval until moved into category four. Therefore, staff recommends this portion of the site to be designated an out parcel, not approved for subdivision of this preliminary plan. In order to develop the area for out parcel, a future preliminary plan will be required. That plan may be approved once the water and sewer category for existing parcel six is changed. Next slide, please. This exhibit shows how the proposed parcels on the southern end of the site will take access from Masswoman Drive. Section 24 dash 121, 8th of the subdivision regulations requires that parcels not take direct access from the road of arterial classification. The variation from this section is therefore needed in order to allow the proposed access points shown. Staff supports the applicant's request for variation, as described in finding seven of the staff report. Next slide, please. This application is subject to the Willen Preservation Ordinance, and a TCP one has impounded the application. This TCP one shows the subject parcels in red and white and the right-of-way in blue. The primary management area is shown outlined in the agenda. Willen Preservation Areas are shown in dark green, while A-4 Station Areas are shown in light green. Special trees proposed for removal are shown by the red X's. The applicant submitted a variant request for removal of special trees. Staff supports the request as described in finding 13 of the staff report. Next slide, please. Project also proposes impacts to the primary management area. Impact one is where Masswoman Drive, all the stream and wetland, others. Impact two is where proposed water line affects the stream, wetland, bathers, and one very near flood zone. Staff supports the PMA impacts requested by the applicant, as described in finding 13 of the staff report. In conclusion, the subdivision and zoning staff recommends that planning board adopt the findings and approve preliminary plan subdivision four dash two zero zero one one, ELP DC, as well as TCP one dash zero one seven dash two twenty twenty, a variance from section 25 dash 122 B1G, a variation from section 24 dash 121 A3, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. The applicant has communicated proposed revisions to conditions of approval contained in the report. Staff confirms with the proposed revisions, which are included on the record. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz Campbell. Good to see you. Um, can you go back to a slide, maybe slide 10, um, to see if, um, I, I just want to get a bit, I can't read the print. Um, it's too tiny for me, so I, I just want to, just, can you direct, uh, Mr. Flanagan to the cursor for parcel six?
Um, yes, we need to, uh, move it to the, to the right.
To the right.
And then up.
To the right.
Uh, almost, further, further to the right. Yeah, that, that area is where existing parcel six is.
Okay.
So essentially the, yeah, essentially those two parcels, or, yeah, those three parcels in the, uh, in the northwest part of the site.
The top, so which three are the, that?
The top three.
Okay.
Yeah, or the top...
So not that, the middle three?
The parcels in the top right portion of, of this drawing.
So that one up there?
That one there, yes.
Okay.
And then the two below it.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, I was thinking, um, you said, uh, west, uh, okay. Um, okay, so let's see if there are any questions of you. Um, Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Washington?
Yeah, I just did not hear you, Mr. Diaz Campbell, with regards to your comment on the, uh, proposed revisions, uh, applicant's proposed revisions to the conditions. Did you say you supported those or I just didn't hear you? I'm sorry.
Yes, I did say I support. I did say that staff reported that you supported those.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioner?
That's all.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions. I do have a comment with respect to the applicant's revised findings and conditions of approval. There looks to be a typo on their finding and reasons for staff recommendation.
Well, can we, what, I'm gonna call on the applicant now. Maybe you can address that to the applicant. Okay, since we're now...
It's just, it, it, Madam Chair, it's a simple one. It just says AND, A-N-D, as opposed to AN, A-N.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right, so that, so there are no other questions of, um, Commissioner Diaz Campbell. Uh, okay, so I see there was a little typo there. Okay. Mr. Mr., um, Mr. Lynch?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Dan Lynch, Dan Lynch with Law from McMahose with offices in Greenbelt, Maryland. Um, here this morning on behalf of Ellian Acquisitions LLC, and we're here with regards to preliminary plan of subdivision for ELP DC. Um, I have with me here today, um, Michael Stelliano, Vincent Griffith of, um, Ellion. I also have Mike Lenhart, our traffic engineer, and Wade Collinson of Van Duren Associates. Um, they are here to answer any questions or com, or address any comments that this board has with regards to this preliminary plan of subdivision. I'm very happy, um, to have worked with Mr. Diaz Campbell on this application. Um, we arrived at what I consider to be a very good staff report and, for the most part, conditions of approval, which are acceptable to the applicant. I'd also like to thank Ms. Sherry Connor. Um, she helped move this application along and keep us on track. Um, and with that, uh, the applicant does not have any further, uh, comments. We agree with the staff's recommendations, subject to the changes contained in applicant exhibit one. And with the board's mission, I can take you through those changes and address any further comments or questions that you have.
Okay, so, and, um, so let me see. Um, at, at first I saw it was so many pages, but then it was nice, big print, so we thank you. Look, some of us thank you. Some of us thank you for that. Okay.
Yes, we all have that issue.
Yes. So, um, um, let's see, let's see if the board has any questions regarding, um, the proposed, um, revised finding and the conditions. And then, um, and then, Mr. Diaz Campbell, you'll address the matter, um, that Commissioner, um, Geraldo raised. Um, you, you'll take note of that, rather. It doesn't need to be addressed any further. Okay. Um, does it, the, does the board have any questions of Mr. Lynch or any desire to go through these conditions as in applicant's exhibit number one? Madam Vice Chair?
No, no, I don't, Madam Chair.
Okay, somebody's echoing, so we need to turn the other mics off other than the board right now. Okay. Um, Commissioner Washington?
Uh, no, uh, thank you. Very, very, uh, well thought, thought through and, uh, self-explanatory, so.
Okay, good. Commissioner Geraldo?
No further questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Diaz Campbell, is there anything else to add?
I'm good, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, first let me go back to Mr. Diaz Campbell. Anything else to add?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, Mr. Warner?
I just wanted to ask a quick question. This is Principal Counsel David Warner, uh, showing gratitude as appropriate this month. Um, are the findings that were submitted by the applicant, they refer to parcel seven. Is that supposed to be parcel six?
The, uh, the version that I have that's up on the website says, uh, parcel six.
You mean in the applicant exhibit one, Mr. Warner?
Oh wait, I see the problem. So, yes, the finding course says parcel six in one location and parcel seven in one, in another location. It should say parcel six in both locations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Okay, and you got, uh, what, um, Commissioner Geraldo said too, right, Mr. Diaz Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That typo will be corrected.
Thank you. Okay. Um, are, are there any other questions from anyone? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff in addition to the amended finding outlined in applicant exhibit number one with the change, um, just noted on the record, uh, where it should be parcel six throughout. Um, an approved preliminary plan, uh, four dash two zero zero one one and TCP one dash zero one seven dash two zero zero, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report and is further amended by applicant exhibit number one, in addition to the, uh, technical change, uh, correction as noted by Commissioner Geraldo. Uh, and finally, approve variation from section two four dash one two one A3 and approval of variance to section two five dash one two two B1G.
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington.
Second?
We have a second by Vice Chair Bailey. Um, Madam Vice Chair?
But I?
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Would I?
Next time. Okay, the ayes have it four zero. Thank you very much. Mr. Hunt, you need to zoom in.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you. Um, zoom in so we can check out your no shade member, see if it's there. Okay. Um, are we okay? Does anyone need a break, board?
We're good.
Okay. All right, so wait, are you zooming in? Okay, I don't see it. No, you're a no. Okay. All right, the next item that we have before us is, um, item si, is item six, which is, um, a detailed site plan two zero zero one seven, Royal Farms, number three eighty-one at Warkham Hill Road. I'm gonna check to, um, to make sure we have the participants. Um, Mr. Burke? He's, he's muted. We see you. Mr. Burke? Okay, we see you. You're gonna... It's him? They're saying you have to, we... We see you, and you're unmuted on our end. Okay, we're gonna come back to you while you try to figure that out, okay? And Mr. Cron maybe can help you. Mr. Tedesco, are you on?
What, Madam Chair? I'm present.
Okay, wonderful. Ms. Dean, Emily Dean?
Yes, I'm on.
Wonderful. We see you on your... Can you unmute him? Okay, you're unmuted on our end. Mr. Bainbridge? Okay, you're unmuted on our end. You might have to do something from your end. We'll come back to you, Mr....
I'm here.
Wonderful. Okay. Yes, we can hear you. That's Mr. Bainbridge?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, so you're in. Mr. Mortorff? Mortorf? Okay, you can help me out here. From Ratcliffe Architects. Mr. Tedesco, how do I pronounce it?
It's Mortorf. I don't know if I see him.
Okay.
We'll try to contact him, but it's probably not critical if he's not here.
Okay. John Neff?
Here.
John? Okay, wonderful. Do we see that name? Anthony LaRocca? Okay, we don't see...
He's not able to see on the call today.
Okay, thank you.
He's with... He's with Kim Lee Horn, and Ms. Dean's on, so I think we're good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Wait a minute. Okay, got it. Okay, Mallory Johnson?
Yeah.
Do you see that name? I know we have an exhibit from Dwight Jones, if he's not on. Okay, well, now we got... Mr. Burke, how are you coming along?
Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, we can hear you. We hear you a little bit too much right now. Okay, so if you're going to present, let's make sure everyone else... I'm turning their mics off to make sure we don't have that echoing. So let's try it again, Mr. Burke. Uh-oh.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Perfect.
No echo.
Perfect. Okay.
Very good.
With gratitude.
I apologize. I just picked up a commission-issued laptop this week, and I'm still working the bugs out on that, so...
Okay.
I do apologize.
Thank you. Okay, no worries.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Everyone still there? I'm sorry, my focus... Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Members of the... Can you hear me okay?
We hear you just fine.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm really sorry.
Okay, now, Mr. Burke? Mr. Burke?
Yes.
It looks as though we're past the technical difficulties. Just take... Just breathe. We're all here with gratitude, and then resume. Okay?
Namaste.
Okay, namaste.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning Board. I'm Thomas Burke with the Urban Design Section. The trip project before you listed as item six on the agenda refers to detailed site plan DSP 20017 for Royal Farms 381, Walker Mill Road, which includes a type-two tree conservation plan, TCP2-027-2020. The applicant is seeking approval of a detailed site plan to develop the site with a food and beverage store, gas station, and a car wash. Before I begin, I would like to bring your attention to some items introduced into the additional backup by the applicant's attorney, Mr. Tedesco, who can speak to these items following my presentation.
Okay, and then I should have mentioned, we do have three exhibits from Mr. Tedesco, the revised conditions, and I'm gonna accept them as... I'm gonna identify them as applicant's exhibit one, or A, B, and C, or one, two, and three, rather. Applicant's revised conditions, the landscape rendering... No, well, you know what? That's not right, because he's marked them. Exhibit A would be the revised LP and landscape rendering would be two, and then applicant's conditions, revised conditions, would be three. And also, while you have... To make sure the Board is good, we have seven submissions from oppositions. And Dwight Jones email is opponent's exhibit number one. Dean Newman is opponent's exhibit number two. That was an email. Fay Norman's email is opponent's exhibit number three. David Goodwin email is opponent's exhibit number four. Carl Dunn is opponent's exhibit number five. That's an email as well. Howard Whitehead email is opponent's exhibit number six, and Mallory Johnson letter is opponent's exhibit number seven, if that helps people.
Very good. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just clarify again, the conditions was applicant exhibit number what?
Well, I changed it because they already had an exhibit A.
But that's...
So I just... I have it as three. I have it as three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
So moving on...
Madam Chair, I'm still not clear how the applicant's revised conditions and their additional exhibits, because they weren't identified as such in the report. So...
There were the supplemental items that we received as applicant's exhibit three.
Right. That was the change in the recommendation?
Applicant's revised... Yeah. Well, I'll let... We'll let... You know what? We'll finish with Mr. Burke, and we'll let the applicant talk to them, to speak to that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Burke. You may continue.
No. Very well. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on then to slide two, please. The site is located in the central portion of Prince George's County in planning area 75A and Council District Six. Slide three, please. More specifically, the site is located in the southwest quadrant of the intersection of Walker Mill Road and Ritchie Road in District Tights. Slide four, please. And is within the I-1 zone. Slide five, please. This property is also located in the military installation overlay zone for height. The proposed single-story building is within the allowable height limit. Slide six, please. This aerial photo illustrates the current disposition of the property as fully wooded. Slide seven, please. And has significant topography, particularly toward the rear of the property, where southwest branch attributable to the Patuxent River runs through the site. Slide eight, please. Walker Mill Road is classified as a master plan arterial. Ritchie Road, running south in green, is a master plan coactor. Slide nine, please. This application proposes the development of a 4,649-square-foot Royal Farms food and beverage store with a gas station and a 1,248-square-foot car wash. This development will occur in the eastern portion of the property, leaving in preservation the western portion where PMA for streams, for A-stream, associated buffer, steep slopes, and floodplain exist. The seven fuel dispensers are shown here shaded a darker gray along the top of the site with a food and beverage store below it. The car wash and diesel dispensers can be seen to the right of the retail building. Located in the I-1 zone, the proposed uses are all permitted, subject to the approval of a detailed site plan, the findings for which can be found starting on page seven of the staff report. It should also be noted that the previous zoning map amendments were approved for this site, with conditions that a site plan shall be submitted to the district council for approval. Slide 10, please. Sidewalks are provided along the frontage and within the site as seen here in beige and will include marked crossings at the entrances and in the parking lot, contributing to the overall circulation of the site. The woodland conservation area and floodplain can be seen here below the developed area. This application is also subject to the requirements of the landscape manual and shows full conformance. Slide 11, please. The applicant is proposing to use durable quality materials, including brick, stone, and composite siding. The retail building shown here has a height of approximately 21 feet and is designed to reflect a rural aesthetic typical of the corporate brand. A stone veneer sill wraps the base of the building with a partial wide brick band in the center and beige cementitious siding with a dark red cornice along the upper portion. The main entrance projects from the front facade with the entry points on either side of this projection. This front elevation shows large store front window... Yes, large store front windows, a gable and seam roof, and the signature cupola with weather vane at the peak. Bow windows with green awnings are provided in opposition, shown here on the front right. Royal Farms' signature blue and green sign will be presented above the front venestration with world-famous chicken and fresh kitchen provided on an awning across the front facade. Slide 12, please. The design features provided of the front elevations carry through to the side elevations. Slide 13, please. And to some extent, along the rear elevation, which also includes the Royal Farms sign. Slide 14, please. The car wash will be located to the south of the store and will also feature the stone sill, beige cementitious siding, accent lighting, and red fascia along the roofline. Storefront windows are shown here along the front facade. Slide 15, please. In addition to the building-mounted signs, the applicant is proposing a pylon sign, shown on this slide in the upper-left side, two-directional signs, an example of which is shown next to the pylon sign, and signage for the car wash, fuel dispenser, canopies, and fuel pumps. The exhibit provided... The exhibit map provided at the bottom left corner of this slide shows the pylon sign located in the center of the site at the intersection of Walker Mill Road and Ritchie Road. The sign will be double-faced and will include the fuel price display. The directional sign will be located at each driveway entrance and will be double-faced internally-lit boxes. A signage table was provided with the application demonstrating conformance with the zoning ordinance. Slide 16, please. The proposed fuel canopy will be a flat roof supported by two white pre-finished metal-wrapped columns between each fuel dispenser aisle. The end columns will be wrapped in stone veneer to match the retail building. The canopy fascia will be wrapped in a white internally-eliminated cabinet with the corporate Royal Farms logo provided on the front and each side fascia, shown on the right side of this slide. The diesel canopy, shown on the left, will include a yellow band with diesel displayed on each front fascia. Slide 17, please. The type-two tree conservation plan, TCP2-027-2020, shows that the applicant exceeds the total woodland conservation requirement of 1.64 acres by providing woodland preservation on site. Slide 18, please. An approved natural resources inventory was submitted with the application, showing that the site contains regulated environmental features, including streams and associated buffers, steep slopes, and 100-year floodplain, all of which comprise the PMA, the boundary for which can be seen here in red. Three impacts to the PMA have been requested with this application. Slide 19, please. Provided here, a proposed impact of site grading as shown in light blue and for sewer disturbance, shown in red. Maybe more sand than red there. The site contains an M-POT-planned Ritchie branch trail, an easement for which is being provided by the applicant and shown as the dark dashed lines through the site. Although this trail is not proposed to be developed at this time, the easements are recommended to be secured prior to permit issuance, and the impacts to the site and PMA have been evaluated, as shown here in purple. Slide 20, please. And here as well. As you can see by the location of the trail relative to the PMA, again shown as the red line, and other considerations of the site, such as topography and connections to adjacent properties, the impacts were minimized to the extent practical. This, along with the other PMA impacts, are supported by staff, an evaluation of which can be found on page 11 of the staff report. The Urban Design staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve detailed site plan DSP 20017 and TCP2-027-2020 for Royal Farms 381, Walker Mill Road, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report dated October 27, 2020, and is amended by the applicant. With that, Madam Chair, this concludes the staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Burke. Let's see if there's any questions of you at this time. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Tedesco, you're on.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. For the record, Matthew Tedesco, the law firm of Mac Mahosey, here on behalf of the applicant, Two Farms Inc., doing business at Royal Farms. Good morning, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioner Washington, Commissioner Geraldo. Madam Chair, although you did a roll call previously, we do... I do want to recognize a couple of individuals who we have with us this morning. Mr. Jeff Bainbridge, who's the director of real estate for Royal Farms is on the line. I don't know if Bill Mortorf has joined us, but he's with Ratcliffe Architects, so the architects of record. Emily Dean, John Neff, and Anthony LaRocca with Kim Lee Horn, they're civil engineers for the project, who are with us as well. I want to thank Mr. Burke for his presentation this morning. I always say it's not how we start, it's how we finish, and I think he finished quite well. So I want to thank him for his presentation and his material, the staff report, as well as all the referring agencies who reviewed this application and worked with us throughout. I don't have a tremendous amount to say. I do know we were provided... I want to thank staff for providing us copies with the opposition emails and letters that came in just before the noon deadline on Tuesday, some of which we got after the deadline. So we haven't had a chance to really respond. I did... I do want the record to reflect, however, I did reach out to each of the seven individuals yesterday via email to make sure contact information was shared and lines of communication were opened. I also want to highlight a couple of things from the staff report, just to reconfirm them for not only your edification, but the citizens edification, who may be participating in this process for the first time. This property was rezoned to the industrial zone in 1970 and 1977, respectively. So it's been industrially zoned over 40 years. So my entire lifetime, since I'm 42. So it's been industrially zoned for over 40 years. It was retained in the industrial zoning designation in the 2010 Subregion Four Master Plan and SMA. It is generally included within 700... More than 753 acres of industrially-zoned land that primarily makes up the area south of Central Avenue, west of the Capitol Beltway, down Ritchie Road and to the... Where Ritchie Road, Walker Mill Road, and Ritchie Marble Road all intersect. That whole quadrant, with the exception of a handful of properties, is all I-1 zone for which this property is included. As Mr. Burke in his staff report indicated, a gas station in combination with food and beverage store is a permitted use in the industrial zone, in the I-1 zone in particular, subject to a detailed site plan. That's been the law of the land for more than three or more years now, subject to a DSP. The car wash facility is a byright permitted use, does not subject to a detailed site plan, however, is included in this detailed site plan because of the rezoning applications, the zoning map amendments A-8033 and A-9190, which require detailed site plan for any development on the subject property. There is residential property to the southwest of this industrial area. I think Mr. Johnson is on the phone and is a representative of that neighborhood and a president of that neighborhood, and we thank him for joining us this morning. Although I have not had a chance to connect or talk to Mr. Johnson, I appreciate his involvement in this case nevertheless. I do want to highlight that the development of this property, which, if you have our rendered landscape plan, unfortunately, it didn't make it into your PowerPoint backup, but we did submit it before the deadline. If you don't have it, I can share my screen if that's permissible.
Do you have it? Yeah, we do have it. Mr. Flanagan is getting it up there.
Okay. I'll just pause momentarily, just so that can be pulled up. Mr. Flanagan, scroll down. I think it'll be the second. The next, the next one. There you go. Keep going, to the rendered landscape plan. That's it. Thank you, Kenny. So, you know, we felt that this exhibit was important not only for the board's edification, and I do want to acknowledge Mr. Burke did ask for this so that he could include it in his backup. It took us a little while to render that, and unfortunately, we didn't get it done until after his material was required, if you do so. We do have it, but the key takeaway from that slide is you can see all of the development as required in the rezoning approvals is towards the Walker Mill Road and Ritchie Road frontage. There is significant woodland conservation to the southwest of the project site, which acts as a natural buffer to the existing residential development beyond. In addition to that, and notwithstanding the fact that that area, give or take, is about five acres of woodland area, we're required under the woodland conservation ordinance to have 1.64 acres of woodland conservation. We are providing 2.13 acres of woodland conservation. In addition to that, there's the stream, the floodplain, and PMAs, with the exception of those three minor impacts, all of which are contained to the northern side of the site, saving the trail, that's a master plan trail that's been requested, an easement has been requested by staff, the floodplain and PMA are being preserved. Those will act as natural buffers between this use and the existing residential, notwithstanding the industrial zoning classification. Moreover, the applicant is proposing, you can see it on that slide, a row of fairly substantial plantings. Those trees that make up that west, southwestern boundary where you see the drive aisle and then the trees, those are made up of nine red oaks. Those will grow to 60 to 70 feet with a 45-foot spread, eight maples, sugar maples, again 60 to 75-foot heights, 45-foot spreads, and six red cedars, that's a 40-foot to 50-foot tree with a 20-foot spread. So that's a total of 23 fairly substantial tree plantings in addition to the existing woodland that's already there that we feel will be a very significant natural and proposed buffer from this use, albeit being within the industrial zone in a 700-acre industrial area. The closest residential lot, just so you know, through, from my measurement from the property line, not necessarily to the gas canopies or the store, but just from the developmental area to the lots, is over 300 feet. So that's, again, a pretty significant buffer. It's actually further away than even the existing industrial uses that you see in that slide. Another point I just want to highlight is that the tree canopy coverage requirement for this development is only 0.77 acres, that's required. We are providing 2.48 acres, so more than tripled. We have, we have seven microbiota retention facilities and an underground detention facility to treat the 100-year storm. If I could just turn to some of the items that were raised and some of the citizens' opposition, certainly understanding and being sympathetic to, you know, the comment that seems to be fairly consistent with respect to, we already have enough gas stations, there's so many within so many miles. I am, I do understand that sentiment. However, for this particular site and this particular use, the applicant is not required legally to demonstrate the need for this use. The need has more or less been predetermined by the fact that this property is industrially zoned, and the county council has permitted this use in the industrial zone. So although there might be other facilities nearby or within whatever geographical radius you want to draw, that's really irrelevant legally to this application. Moreover, to that point though, I do want to highlight that as an industrial zone property goes and industrial uses go, a service-oriented use like this that will serve the needs of not only the residential community but also the industrial community as well as any pastor buys, provides a higher and better use with respect to comparable industrial uses, given the fact that it does provide a service-oriented use, whether it be for goods and services or for vehicle sales, vehicle fuel sales, or the car wash use. Moreover, in addition to some of the comments that we heard or saw late Tuesday in response to some of the opposition comments, I do, the applicant in consultation with staff was asked to look at, in particular, the signage on the rear of the building. Right now, we have proposed a Royal Farms signage on the rear of the building. The applicant, in respect to the community and some of the comments, as willing and I'm representing here today, is proffering the removal of that sign on the back of the building. We think that that is appropriate and happy to provide that removal. In addition, there were some comments about Royal Farms, which I think you all know by now, is a Maryland-owned company, local, has been expanding in Prince George's County, but there were some comments that I read with respect to what has Royal Farms really done for Prince George's County, or something to that effect. I don't want to speak for everyone, I'm paraphrasing, but I think it's appropriate to also highlight to you all, as well as for the record, that as a Maryland company, as taking a significant interest in Prince George's County and investing millions and millions of dollars per site, in addition to all of that, Royal Farms has donated to National Lights Out throughout the county for the last three years, donated to various community days in the county, Radiant Alley in particular, has donated to the District 5 Coffee Club and the District 5 Police Christmas events, donated to the Central County Coalition, donated to the Alice Ferguson Foundation for its events, and has donated to the Little Washington Scholarship Program for its events. We do try to pride ourselves in being, filling profit in the communities that we go into. This community not being any exception, and we would be happy to work with the local community if that is the desire of the community. Finally, and I'll just conclude with the other point that was raised with respect to electric vehicle charging stations, and whether any are being proposed for this facility, and if not why, or they should be. So Royal Farms has, has a commitment to alternative fuel options as well as renewable energy. Some of our sites in the county, in fact, the Allentown Road site, which is the first one in Prince George's County, does have an EV charging station, and they do have a decent-sized network of EV charging stations, but the experience has been that those are not yet heavily utilized. In fact, the Camp Springs store, which has them, again, the first store in the county, my understanding from information that was provided from the applicant is that that charging station is the most used charging station in the county, but even at the most used, it only averages about two charging sessions a day. So we don't yet quite see a need or high demand for increasing the network size of EV stations throughout the portfolio. However, and again, in consultation with your staff, I want to thank Mr. Burke and Ms. Kozak, we did communicate with the applicant yesterday, and we are committed, and this goes to Commissioner Geraldo's questions on some other sites and applications that I've handled, we are committed to providing or installing now infrastructure to accommodate future demand so that we can easily adapt and put in charging stations at this facility without any deleterious impacts to the operation or the use. We'll put that infrastructure in and can retrofit as demand increases. In addition, I'm told that this facility in particular will provide fuel options that include regular 88, which is E15, and flex fuels, which is E85, which is alternative fuel options for consumers that are more environmentally friendly. My word, not the industry word, so.
Mr. Tedesco, oh, you're getting ready, it sounds like, but I'm going to ask, I want to make sure that we're getting some of these in the event, I don't know which way the motion is going to go, but it sounds like you're proffering some conditions here, and I want to make sure we're getting, that our staff is getting them so that we can.
Yeah, correct, Madam Chair, thank you for that. I'm happy to summarize those again, just for those who are diligently note-taking, but we did review those with your staff, and I think staff found them acceptable, and don't want to speak for staff, but responsive to some of the opposition comments we got on Tuesday, but they would be a proper condition to remove the building-mounted sign on the rear elevation, as well as proper condition to provide necessary infrastructure to accommodate future EV charging stations if demand warranted.
Okay.
Okay, and, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, with that, I was just going to clarify the revised applicant's condition, and again, I will apologize for the confusion with the naming conventions. With how we do things now for the last 28 hearings, it's kind of challenging on pre-marketing exhibit that would be referenced in the condition, but also that document itself being included in and of itself. So we use Exhibit A to reference the revised landscape plan.
That's fine.
Okay, so I think, so Exhibit A would be the revised landscape plan as referenced in Exhibit 3, which is the revised condition. And that, that's just intended solely to ensure that at the time of certification, the landscape plan is revised to depict what's on the detailed site plan, and those revisions to the landscape plan became necessary with responding to comments from staff, in particular trails section with respect to crosswalks and sidewalks, it required us to tweak some of the planting. We are still more than exceeding the landscape manual planting requirements, but we had to kind of relocate and shift some things around, and we just wanted to make sure that we had no issues at the time of certification. So with that, I'll stop talking. I want to thank the board for its indulgence, I want to thank the community members who are here with us. I look forward to hearing from them, and I'm happy to respond further as needed or as questions arise. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, first, if the board has any questions of you, but one thing I want you to be thinking of, and I'm looking through the staff report about the required parking spaces, I'm trying to find this page, and I thought, was it 50? What's the required number of parking spaces?
That's correct, Madam Chair. Tom Burke, for the record, 50 spaces required, I think 72 being provided.
Right, so that's what I'd like to get at. Why do we need 72 spaces, Mr. Tedesco?
Well, Madam Chair, you'll notice that all the spaces are primarily focused towards the Walker Mill Road, Ritchie Road frontages and away from any residential, but what we've experienced with Royal Farms in particular, given its popularity, especially not just its gas fuel sales, but just its popularity with respect to the service oriented and the food offerings that it provides, that the more open parking we have, the less likely people are to park at the pumps and then walk into the facility, which when that occurs, all that really does is create more backup and circulation and queuing issues. In addition, because this site has a car wash, not that it's something we would encourage or propose, but because it has a car wash, what you oftentimes see is some folks will exit the car wash and want to, you know, dry their cars or what have you. So we feel like having an additional parking, especially that parking along Ritchie Road, will facilitate a much better open circulation plan and safety, and so, and keep pedestrian vehicular movements open and safe. In addition to the three diesel pumps, we don't want to have queuing in any of the pumps or any type of issues with pedestrians, especially given the fact that we are proposing a 10-foot wide shared hiker trail along the frontage. We've been asked to make connections to the Royal Farms convenience store from those frontages, so, you know, I think trails, and everyone expects, and some of the points I read earlier, we do want to encourage and increase pedestrian connectivity, and if we have a bunch of cars queued up at pumps and not pulling out of the pumps and accessing the open parking, that becomes a problem. So we feel like it's a deterrent to parking at the pump, and then it creates the openness and safety that's needed for, you know, what's a fairly popular use.
Okay, we may, we may come back to that, but I'm going to see if the board has other questions for you at this time. Thank you, Mr. Tedesco. Okay, Madam Vice Chair.
I don't have any questions, but I would encourage Mr. Tedesco to continue talking and speaking with folk in the community. I think that's very important.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner.
May I respond to that real quick? Thank you, Vice Chairwoman Bailey. Yes, we, as I indicated, I did reach out to the seven individuals yesterday, have not heard anything back, but certainly have availed myself to further dialogue even beyond today and welcome that opportunity. I had not, up until Tuesday, had not heard anything from any of the informational mailings that were sent back in March and again in September, nor the postings, again, until yesterday. We are also with the help of GS Park and Associates, currently working with and reaching out to the Central County Coalition as well as the 202 Corridor Coalition, and in the process of that outreach as well. So we will and we continue to, as you know, that's, that's our steadfast commitment to the community, and we'll continue to do that.
That's great, but I recognize some of these names, and I know they're not affiliated with the Coalition, and that's why I think it's important to continue your conversation with the individuals who are written into our SRTU. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Washington.
No questions, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Geraldo.
One question, Mr. Tedesco, thank you for the presentation. I didn't see any, and maybe, perhaps I missed any provision for bicycle racks or bicycle repair station, given the fact that you're surrounded, at least on the backside, the southwest side, by residential, and there's a proposed trail.
It's Condition 1G.
Is it? Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington, that was going to be my responsibility, but yeah, we are proposing bicycle racks, again, that was requested by staff, the trails section staff, they requested that, we are happy to provide that.
What about a repair, a little repair station?
We have not proposed that. I don't think that would be necessary at this application, but it's certainly something we can continue to look at, but we honestly don't see a lot of bicycle usage, but we do want to provide the racks to encourage it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tedesco, we're going to come back to you in a second. We have a number of people signed up, as I said, we have, we have considerable backup, well, two people signed up, we have considerable backup as I identified, the opponent's exhibits one through seven, but I do want to tell people, number one, this is, this is the situation in which the planning board frequently finds ourselves, or finds itself. We are not a legislative body, but we are, we have tons and tons of laws and regulations that we have to sift through to make sure that an application conforms with the law or assess whether it conforms with the law or doesn't. So one of the things, and so that includes the legislation as determined by the council in some types of applications, it's the state land use article, then we have to deal with the interpretations by the highest court in the state and sometimes the Supreme Court of the United States. So we have an abundance of regulations and plus the rest of the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regs when appropriate, and so much more. So it's very, very hard on our technical staff when they, when they send out all these referrals to all these different places, the people send, or entities send their referrals back, Mr. Burke, in this case, has to sift through all of that, and, and then we have to hear from everyone who desires to speak, and, and then figure out whether the application meets the legal criteria, or whether it can be improved, or whether it needs to be tweaked, you know, or whether it doesn't. If it doesn't meet the legal criteria, we cannot approve it. If it does meet the legal criteria, then we cannot disapprove it because the courts determine that as arbitrary and capricious. So we have to abide by the laws and regulations that have been established for us, not by us, for us. So in this particular case, we have the Prince George's County Council that determined that this use is a permitted use in this, in this zone. So we have the I-1 zone here, and this use has already been predetermined as absolutely permitted with a detailed site plan. So what we then have to do is assess whether the detailed site plan conforms with the requirements. There have been a number of questions raised, and, but, but the other thing this, this board must do is, we hear the testimony of people who desire to speak, and we're not bound by the strict rules of evidence that a trial in the circuit court has to abide by, but the, but we do have to abide by the one criteria that all testimony has to be relevant to what we have to consider. So that's the one thing that we have to do. So, and, and what we find ourselves, the situation we find ourselves in regularly is that, and ourselves too, because we don't get worked up until we see something being proposed in our respective communities, because we all live in Prince George's County too, and, and that's when people tend to zero in and, and may not know all the rules and regulations that we have to abide by. So the one thing I wanted to clarify is that this is a permitted use, and I'm also going to turn to to turn to our principal counsel, Mr. Warner, for a second, because someone raised in the letters regarding gas stations and convenience stores, and why they are called food and beverage stores, as though it's not tantamount to a grocery store, so why are we calling it a food and beverage store? And I would like for Mr. Warner, our principal counsel, to address that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Mr. Warner, Principal Counsel. The county council has created a definition called food and beverage stores, who are a use like the one proposed here on the site. In zoning, of course, you can only be as specific as reasonably possible. So for instance, to have a use that is limited just to selling potato chips, and then another use permitted just to selling candy, and then another one just for coffee or something, you can, you can carve it up in only so many ways. And so our county council has carved up the type of use here and called it a food and beverage store, and they use that same designation for similar types of businesses, which is appropriate under zoning. And there isn't a separate definition, for instance, for convenience stores or for grocery stores. This is the definition that applies to uses like this Royal Farms is proposing to do and similar businesses. Does that answer your question?
It, it, it does, and, and I have another question. We typically have, people tend to not like gas stations. Gas stations are permitted in the zone. That has been predetermined, as you, as I just said, and you just said as well. This is the industrial, light industrial zone. I-1 is a light industrial zone, and this is, so this is a use that's, that's already permitted. And, and when people refer to the number of gas stations, is that a factor that is, that we can utilize on determine, in determining whether or not we need another gas station? Isn't, it's not the need for another gas station? I know the council, as we said, the council's already predetermined that this is a permitted use, so is the, the mere fact that we have X number of gas stations in, within a, maybe a 2.5 or 3-mile radius, is that a criteria for denying an application for a gas station that is deemed permitted?
No, it's not. Now, you know, what you're reviewing today is a detailed site plan, so you are reviewing a plan and evaluating its design on a whole host of factors. Those factors relate to the design of this site. There is nothing in your evaluation criteria that the county has set out for you that allows you to look at what uses are being done on other properties. That just is not a, a particular criteria you can evaluate when you're looking at the design of a specific site.
Okay. There was another question, and maybe Mr. Tedesco can, can address this. You know, there, there was an issue about traffic, that this might generate a lot of traffic, but can you explain that this is, that traffic, first of all, traffic, and traffic is analyzed at the preliminary plan stage, so it's a different stage where we can analyze this, and, and that is not what's before us. We, that's under the adequate public facilities test for subdivisions, not detailed site plans. But, but there's also Mr. Tedesco, so, so we can't address traffic right now, but someone did raise the issue that people are speeding, and I, and I want to, when we know, if there's excessive speeding, that's something that we, as a government entity, can do to, we can perhaps help by reaching out to the county police department to monitor those areas where you may see constant speeding, and, because I know that that was in one of the exhibits. And maybe, maybe Mr. Tedesco, you can, are you aware of anything like this in terms of the speeding?
Nothing beyond that same email or letter that you saw, I saw as well, so that's the first I heard of it. Certainly, I'm very familiar with this area of the county. I, I travel it almost daily, and so I will, you know, I can speak to, you know, there's two circles on the inside of the Beltway, outside the Beltway on Richie Marlborough Road. There's obviously the Richie Station development, as well as the industrial park and some of the recent improvements on the north side. I, I don't want to question a citizen's experience of the roads that they travel every day. There are a number of traffic lights, as well as traffic circles along that corridor. If there, you know, there are also, whether there's a strong enough police presence or not, that's certainly something that, you know, we could collectively work on. We certainly, I do see some officers at some of the other locations up and around that corridor on occasion, but I'm not personally familiar with any speeding issues. I would echo your thoughts with respect to the, the traffic adequacy analysis that is done at the time of subdivision, preliminary plan of subdivision. This property went through subdivision in the 1970s and was plotted for post the zoning to the I-1 zone. This development, the gross floor area is less than 5,000 square feet. It's in keeping with that preliminary plan of subdivision, and your traffic section also did an analysis with respect to the anticipated peak hour trips, although did not make an adequacy determination because such a determination is outside the scope of the DSP.
So that, so in essence, what you're saying is the preliminary plan that was approved is still in effect? I mean, the, the, I mean, it, this, this does not deviate, so a new preliminary plan is not required?
Correct. The new preliminary plan was, was not required. The property is plotted pursuant to those preliminary plans. There are no, you know, plotted in the 70s, so there are no conditions on that plot with respect to a trip cap per se, but there was a determination, given the gross floor area of this development, and that subdivision, that a new subdivision was not required.
And-
And I would, I would concur with that analysis and that determination.
Thank you. And then, another issue that was raised, I mean, there are lots of issues that are raised, but another one that was raised in terms of the traffic and whatnot, which is, and, and the truck traffic in particular, which would be problematic, given the number of potholes on the, on the neighborhood streets there, and that is something perhaps we can deal with, with maybe the appropriate county agencies to deal with potholes, so, to address, at least, address that issue. So I'm, I guess, I'm now going to call on our citizens who have signed up. I think first we have Mallory Johnson. Okay, you're unmuted here, Mallory Johnson. Oh, there you are, okay.
Greetings to county council members. My name is Mallory Johnson. I reside at 1224 Darlington Street in Fallsfield, Maryland. I'm, I'm currently the president of the Richie Heights, Richie Manor Civic Association. The proposed location for the Royal Farms convenience store, gas station, and car wash are bordering my community. In fact, I will be able to see and hear activities taking place at that location from my backyard. Also, there are at least 17 other single-family detached homeowners that will be directly affected by this development.
Mr. Johnson, can I stop you for a second? I just, can we go to a, a slide that can, where Mr. Johnson can identify pretty much where he lives and, and vis a vis the gas station? Mr. Tedesco, what slide would that be, do you think, the best one?
That one right there looks pretty good.
Kenny, if you could scroll back up to the colored rendered plan, I think I know Mr. Johnson's house. If I stop right there, I believe it's this one, if I'm not mistaken, next to the one with the pool. I think it's this one, Mr. Johnson.
I mean, what do you mean this one? We don't see a this one.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm looking at my cursor. I forgot you can't see it. Okay, if you can, if Kenny can put the cursor on the house, that you can see the pool in the backyard, kind of central, to the, right there. I think his house, I think it was the Johnson's house, the one to the right.
Is that your house, Mr. Johnson?
That would be my house.
Okay, thank you. We just wanted to get a sense. Okay, please, please continue.
This community dates back to the early 1960s and is composed of 239 single-family homes. What is being proposed will increase truck traffic, which will make it harder for residents to leave and enter the community, but following are some concerns that we would like for you to consider before rendering your decision. Again, we will say that we already have eight gas stations within 2.5 miles radius of our community. We have two Royal Farm gas stations within 3.3 miles radius of our community, and another one is being proposed at Walker Mill and Addison Road. We're saying that with 72 parking spaces being proposed, this looks more like a place to hang out than a gas and ghost location. We all have these issues with racing along Walker Mill and Richie Road. I hear it all the time, any time of day. You can go out in your backyard, you can even be in the house, and all of a sudden you just hear engine roaring and rushing. And yes, we have talked to the police about it. In fact, I'll tell you now, I'm on the chief citizens advisory council. I'm on the District Eight Citizens Advisory Council. We talk about speeding. We talk about this issue. We've been talking about it for the, for the last two and three months.
Mr. Johnson, is it mostly during the day or at night, or, or?
It can happen anytime. That's the problem, anytime. I mean, you can be waking up at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning, and you can hear engines running. It could be during the afternoon time, you can hear engines running.
And, and how is, what's been the police response or enforcement? I mean, is, is it kind of hit or miss, because, because you can't anticipate when-
It's hit or miss. They can't anticipate actually when it's happening.
Okay.
They have to depend on calling in, and then they send a car out. They have put up, like I said, surveillance cars, but the way this, where these gentlemen works, basically is that if they see a strange car anywhere parked along Richie and Richie Road and Walker Mill Road, they're not going to run. Soon as that car's gone, okay, gentlemen, it's time, we can get out here and we can race.
Okay.
The station will be open seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and my question is, okay, when does the community take, get some break again? There is no gas station. Maybe there is only one gas station, that's that Amoco station, but it's on the other side of the street, which is open seven days a week. But it doesn't sell the food items, the fast food items that Royal Farms will be selling. So this actually becomes a place where people will start to hang out at. Okay? And we do have gang activity at, over there at the, at the, at the BP station, and we have two active gangs on Walker Mill Road. Again, there will be parking for trucks, as well as truck turnaround, which will increase truck traffic in the community. And I think we already said that there are electric charge, there's no electric charging Right now, that's all I have.
Okay, first of all, thank you so much, Mr. Johnson, for your care, for your community, and, and for your association, and for participating today. You, you heard our legal counsel address some things, like, for instance, the mere fact that it, that it is permitted, so we cannot then say we have too many gas stations and, and deny it on that basis. We are precluded by law from denying it on that basis. But some things that you're raising that we can perhaps help with at least. You know, I'm, I'm really sorry to hear about the gang activities, and we have, there has been a gang task force in the county, and we have police members, and we as, I know you as an association and citizens in the area are addressing some of these concerns, but sometimes another government entity can elevate the, the problem, and, and so we're willing, I'm willing to step in there for you, for the community to, to reach out to our police and to our gang task force to monitor that situation over there in terms of the gangs, and also in terms of the racing over there. I don't think that the, the Royal Farms gas station contributes to the racing, though, but, but nevertheless, the racing is, is a problem. We're still, you know, you know, we still have the 72 parking space issues, you know, Mr. Tedesco did address that. We'll see what the board feels about that. And then with, you, you talked about the charging stations, but you did get a commitment from the applicant thus far to at least install, it's a proffer, to install the infrastructure to, to allow for a charging station if the need arises, and so, so it won't be too problematic. I'm going to, we'll, we'll see what else we can address here, but I'm going to turn to our board to see if they have any questions of you. Vice Chair Bailey?
No, I, I don't have any questions, but I, I want to thank Mr. Johnson for, for coming and, I mean, well, for presenting today, and we certainly will consider the items that we can't consider. Some of those items are beyond our ability to consider for this particular item, but thank you so very much.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
I don't have any questions either, but I do associate myself with Madam Vice Chair's comments, and thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay. Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no further questions. I want to thank Mr. Johnson as well for his comments.
Okay, thank-
All we can do is do what's provided for, within the law.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Mallory, if, if we have questions, we'll come back to you at this point, and, and Mr. Tedesco will respond as well. Okay, so Dwight Jones, was, was he able to get on? Do you see his name? I don't see it either. Okay, so Mr. Jones did sign up, but he's not on now, but we do have his letter into the record. It was Exhibit Number, I think I had it, Exhibit Number One for Opponents. And all of us, the entire board, has gone through all seven exhibits that have been submitted into the record. That concludes my signup list, so Mr. Tedesco, it's on you for a response, and we're also going to have Mr. Burke respond to anything that he feels appropriate to respond to, as well as Mr. Warner. So let's start with Mr. Tedesco.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, and, and thank you, Mr. Johnson, for his comments. And again, I will, I will just reiterate what I said from the outset, which is, I have reached out to all seven of those community members, make myself available, my, the applicant available. We have historically, with various applications with Royal Farms that I have handled, with the help of GS Proctor and Associates, have continued dialogue with communities post approval, during construction, post-construction, after grand opening, and so forth. Some of that is precipitated into the laundry list of philanthropic, philanthropic things that Royal Farms has done, but some of those also, in, in full disclosure, have been because they're, you know, on Allentown Road in Camp Springs, some of those community members have, have come to us and said, hey, you know, we need to meet because we're, we're experiencing X, Y, and Z, and we need your help. We go and meet with them. We've done that, and we'll continue to do that. So to Mr. Johnson's comments, I would encourage him to please take me up on the offer in my email from yesterday. We will, we are committed to the communities that we go into, and, and as the board knows, I'm a Prince Georgian, I'm not going anywhere, and we're happy, as well as Mr. Steve Proctor, who's an integral team member, to continue to meet with these communities that these applicants develop in. With respect to the parking comment, again, I would strongly encourage the board to approve the DSP as proposed. Again, the, the surplus of parking, we think, is necessary and with respect to just, in our experience, to avoid issues that, in honesty, in honesty, occur just down the street at the Wawa, that doesn't have sufficient parking, or maybe just has parking sufficient enough, but if people park at the pumps, it creates circulation, queuing, and impacts that are far greater than some additional parking, which by the way, we are treating storm, from, from a stormwater management perspective. So it's not further encroaching upon or causing encroachment upon any environmental features, and it really is towards the operational benefit of this use, which admittedly is a, is a very popular use. So with that, I would just strongly encourage that the board approve the DSP as proposed with- with applicants' requested exhibit. And with that, again, I'm happy, I'm happy to stand behind the proffer we made directly in response to some of the comments we heard on Tuesday.
Mr. Tedesco, thank you for reaching out. You indicated you weren't aware of the situation prior to the folks posting their opposition on Tuesday. Which brings me to a question from maybe Mr. Burke or someone in the planning department, is Mr. Johnson's association registered with us? If someone can find that out for.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could be heard on that. I actually looked into that this morning, and I did email Mr. Hunt, Mr. Burke, and Ms. Kozak. The association is registered. They, I double-checked our mailing list, they did receive a mailing back on March 24th. I even went and checked our return mailings, because as you know, we get 60-plus associations and a number of adjoining property owners, and this case was no exception. Some of those come back undelivered. None of the citizens that submitted letters, that received mailings, including Mr. Johnson, including the association that he's the president of, did we receive a return letter. I did note also that Mr. Johnson did become, register as a party of record after the March 24th informational mailing. So would have received a letter not only from the informational mailing, but also a letter from the acceptance mailing, both as an adjoining property owner, a registered civic association, but also, thirdly, as a party of record. So it's unfortunate that we didn't have a chance to talk before today, but nevertheless, that doesn't mean we can't and won't talk in the future.
Right. Okay, so the informational mailing, you said, was March 24th, and the acceptance mailing was September the 1st, and then, of course, the sign posting was October the 13th. My question is, you promised to stay in contact, and, but you've heard the concerns raised by Mr. Johnson. I want to make sure that they, that the community, and Mr. Johnson in particular, on behalf of the association, has a contact number, a name, an actual name. They don't need to be fumbling around trying to figure out who do we call. They need a direct contact number for those problems that may occur.
Yes, I will volunteer myself. They can contact me, and then I know who to contact at Royal Farms, whether it's a construction issue or an operational issue. And Mr. Jeff Bambridge, who's the director of real estate, who helps us also shepherd things on the corporate level, is on and listening to all of this, and is very much committed to that as well. As far as my contact information, it's obviously within all of those letters that were sent, but if those have since been thrown away, it's in the email that I sent yesterday to Mr. Johnson, as well as the six other individuals.
Okay. And this, and another thing that was raised was, you know, this is a board, and this is the planning staff, this is a team that cares, we are all, that cares about Prince George's County and her 900,000-plus residents. We all do. We all live here. And we do not engage in, or entertain, or condone in any way, environmental injustice or racism. We do not. But sometimes allegations are flown around like this, that are simply incorrect. We do, so we will not entertain environmental injustice, but there are issues that are raised, and I just wanted to make that statement on the record, because we all care, and we care deeply. And that is why we struggle, you know, even when the law says, when things meet the requirement of the law, we do encourage that community engagement. But I don't adhere to the fact that some of the statements in the letters, that this is a way of marginalizing the inside-the-beltway community and things of that nature. And so one of the things that they've said, they talked about food deserts as well. And I guess you have Mr. Bambridge on the line, who's participating today, and we know that Royal Farms has good fried chicken, and we know you got some other things. I'd like to know what you have that is healthy, because they are asking for, we had a presentation this morning about, you know, the growing obesity in the county. I have to fess up. But anyway, what are you providing that's healthy?
Madam Chair, before you go forward, because this may be an appropriate item for Royal Farms to also respond to, and I wanted to go back, Mr. Tedesco, to the discussion around parking. And I actually agree with the incremental spaces, because it not only promotes pedestrian walkability, but by that same token, I think that the citizens have a good concern in terms of loitering. So I just wonder if you all might consider proffering something along having signage posted that says no loitering, or, you know, I can't think of the most appropriate signage, but there's something there, and that operationally, there would be some action taken if, in fact, that occurs, especially in the wee hours of the morning or night, and maybe, maybe the operational protocol is that the police are immediately called, or something along those lines.
And I presume we have cameras?
I'm sorry?
And I was saying, I'm hoping we presume we have cameras.
Yeah, and I can address both, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Washington's questions, if that's okay. I understand, Mr. Bambridge.
Can I dovetail first?
Yes.
Can I dovetail, Mr. Tedesco? Okay, so I think it's too much parking. And I'll tell you why. I'm most familiar with the Royal Farms by National Harbor, and with the parking there, what's attractive are people with the race cars. I don't know if that's going to happen here, but I know that happens at National Harbor in different times of the day. Because of the expanse of the parking lot, these racing cars do congregate there at different weekends. Matter of fact, they even have shows there. And so, and I think what lends itself to that is the very large parking lot. So I think that's something that you should consider, and I think, I think when Commissioner Washington is recommending some sort of signage to that effect, and some sort of security measure, because they pull out of those parking lots.
So they don't, well, let me ask Commissioner Geraldo. So basically, you're saying they don't race in the parking lot, but that may be where they convene before or after the racing, or that's where they convene to have the racing car shows? That's rough. Okay. Mr. Tedesco?
So let me try to take all of those as thinkfully as I can. First and foremost, yes, I mean, the county law requires these facilities to be fully, not only lit, but also have security cameras throughout. And so this will be no exception. You know, high-resolution security cameras are provided, proposed, part of the package. As far as the operational issues, Commissioner Geraldo's comment, I'm not familiar with that. I mean, obviously, that's your neck of the woods, you know better than I, but we will reach out. Mr. Bambridge is contacting me now, as you were speaking. We will reach out to operations and figure out what we can do about that. We do have no loitering signage. We will continue to have that on this premises, as well as other premises. That gives us the enforceability to remove individuals on occasion. That has to occur. We are, I'm very cognizant of our store managers not taking the role of the police department. A lot of times, businesses are required or asked to be the first line of defense, so to speak, but none of them are peace officers. We have to encourage the interaction among these businesses with the police department. And I'm happy to report that that's exactly what occurred at other facilities not too far from here, where we did experience some activity that was quickly rectified with the help of the police department. So we are engaged, as every business really should be, especially commercial business in the county, to help our police department to address issues before they arise. And so this one will be no exception. The operational staff and the operational managers are all trained on that. If need be, you know, police are called to handle situations. We don't expect that. One of the benefits of these uses, you know, being a 24-hour, well-lit, eyes-on-the-ground, right at a major intersection, hard corner, is that just because it's there, actually acts as somewhat of a deterrent for some criminal behavior, because there's security cameras, it's well-lit, there's activity, there's people, there's congregation, there's things going on. And if we have a couple of bad actors, you know, we have mechanisms in place from an operational standpoint to address them, and we also have, you know, connections and rely upon our community officers and police officers to assist. And if need be, if the rare occasion occurs where we have activity that is just constantly ongoing, you know, Royal Farms has in the past, on occasion, as needed, hired security at certain times of the week, certain hours of the night, to be on the premises as needed. Again, that's on an as-needed basis. It's not something we experience a lot in Prince George's County, I'm happy to report. But where we've had to, we've done it, and it's really rectified and cured the problem, and we were able to stop having certain activities occur. Again, not in this location, but there have been some that we've experienced. With respect to Madam Chair's question with respect to healthy food options, Royal Farms, yes, obviously is known for its fried chicken. I think we all readily understand, you know, indulging in that type of food daily would not, is not probably advisable. But nevertheless, Royal Farms does provide and offer healthy food options. We actually have, and this store won't be any exception, a new store that just opened up at Brandywine is probably the best example of this. As soon as you walk in the door, right, it hits you right, from as soon as you walk in, is the healthy food grab-and-go options, which are made up of yogurt parfaits, salads, ready-made turkey sandwiches, healthy food options, whether, you know, nuts, bananas, fruits, vegetables, things of that sort, are all there. Not to mention, basically, almost anything you can buy in a grocery store, you can buy at these facilities, whether that be milk, healthy drinks, smoothies, things of that sort. All of those things are included in the Royal Farms, and they're constantly evaluating their menus to respond to market needs and demands, as well as to help curate and create healthy food options for consumers, and not bury it someplace in the back of the store that you have to go find. If you go to the store on Route 5 in Brandywine that just opened up a few months ago, you'll see it as soon as you walk in. It's right, as soon as you walk in, to the right, next to the ready-order touchscreens. It's all right there, easily convenient, and that's predominantly made up of healthy food options.
Thank you for answering that question, Mr. Tedesco. That's important, because all of these fast food places, McDonald's, you know, other places, in addition to the fried chicken, have grilled chicken, you know, skinless chicken, and salads and things of that nature. And so that's, it's important, because the folks in the community are concerned about having healthy food options, so that helps as well. Okay, so you obviously have the ability, you will close out, Mr. Tedesco, on behalf of the applicant in this case, but I am, if you don't have anything else, right this second, I'm going to turn to, first of all, Mr. Burke, and then to Mr. Warner, to see if they have anything else to add. And one other thing, that, you know, what did you say about alternative fuel? Because someone raised that, and I just want to address this, someone raised that fossil fuel industry is virtually uninvestable on Wall Street. Well, there's nothing I can do about that. There's nothing this board can do about that. Okay? It's not a factor that we can consider, it's not even relevant. So we are precluded from considering something that is not, that's not germane to the criteria for this application. But several people did raise about renewable fuel energy and alternative fuel. You did say this, say something about alternative fuel, Mr. Tedesco, earlier, and they talked about the two diesel pumps as well.
Yes, Madam Chair. So this facility, like the one in National Harbor, Commissioner Geraldo is probably most familiar with, we do, this site will offer regular E8, which is E15, and then also the flex fuel E85. The E85 is the high-level ethanol gas blends, again, generally 51% to 83% ethanol, so it's more, I'm not an expert on it, but it provides a flex fuel that is less harmful with respect to how it's manufactured.
Okay. And if I may go back, what you mentioned with the other, with the more recent Royal Farms and Brandywine, that the healthy foods were in the front of the store. We would hope that these, you don't have to go hunting for the healthy foods in this store either. Okay, that it would be right in the front and visible.
Yeah, that's a move that Royal Farms is constantly testing and expanding and tweaking, and we have heard that fairly consistently through some of our leaders, as you might expect, similar to you all with respect to that. So yeah, that is, that is something that is part of the floor plan. Again, you guys don't approve floor plans, it's operationally, but I can tell you that that store, and I believe this store is to be the same with respect to those being right at the front. And then to your point, Madam Chair, there are, you know, skinless chicken, grilled chicken options on the menu. You don't just have to get the fried chicken if you desire chicken, but there are those other packaged healthy food options, if desired.
You know, the fried chicken smells good, though, it kind of calls you, but yeah, we all have to, we all have to, we all have, you know what? The key word is balance. The key word is balance.
Moderation.
Yeah, moderation, yes. Okay. And then, and someone else raised that the convenience stores are not quick fixes to the economic conditions of a community, and they don't raise the income level. No, they don't. And not something that we can consider, but I just want to make sure that it's noted for the record, that we are hearing and addressing the concerns that are raised by the citizens.
And I don't want to belabor this, but that's a good point. I do want to mention, each of these facilities, I mean, they're multimillion-dollar investments into the county, and they do employ upwards of 30 to 40 people. So that's 30 to 40 new jobs. So when you calculate that, along with the tax, that revenue that's increased, the fuel tax and everything else, it is an economic benefit to the county. And as I mentioned before, we see this as a benefit to the residential community, given the comparables of what could be there from a light industrial use, this is actually more service-oriented and provides a service that, you know, a flex warehouse use wouldn't really benefit the community. You all have bigger trucks and tractor-trailers and things of that sort. So I kind of see it differently, but understand, you know, people have different.
I agree, I agree that it will raise the tax base, and no one addresses, until you did just now, given the other permitted uses in the I-1 zone, this may be more palatable for the community than some of the others, as you indicated. I was making the distinction between being an economic benefit versus what this person said was raising the income level. It doesn't necessarily raise the income level at large for the community. It can't, you know, most businesses don't, but it may increase the accessible tax base. Okay, so I just want to make sure we're addressing as many things as possible. I want to turn to Mr. Burke and see if, well, first, Mr. Warner, do you have anything that you need to add, Mr. Warner?
I'd like to just add one thing that I noted in reviewing the letters from the different members of the public. As I mentioned, our, the planning board's role here is to assess the design of the site and the guidelines that the county councils laid out for you to review. There was one other element of the design that was brought up by the members of the public, and that was, why is the site designed to accommodate tractor trucks? And since that is a design feature, that would be something that the planning board would be able to consider as part of its review of this design site plan.
Thank you. We'll have, Mr. Tedesco will have the last word on that, so, but first, let's go, thank you, Mr. Warner. And then we're going to go to Mr. Burke, see if you have anything else to add.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Only to add that staff has had the opportunity to review with the applicant, the additional condition to revise the landscape plan as provided on applicant's Exhibit A, and the proffer to remove the building-mounted sign in the rear, as well as the proffer to add infrastructure for the future installation of electric vehicles, charging stations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, Mr. Tedesco, anything else to add?
Only if you need me to respond to Mr. Warner's comment.
Well, do you feel, do you feel you need to?
I'm asking you if you feel like I need to.
Okay. All right.
I'll respond, just so it's on the record.
Yeah, that silence didn't sound like you, but go ahead. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Warner, for the question, I think. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, predominantly, the diesel fuel pumps are to segregate them out from the vehicle fuel pumps, one to promote circulation, pedestrian safety, and so on. But also, as I mentioned, and I started out this conversation with, it's important to not only look at this site in the micro, but in the macro. I mean, it's part of a 753-acre industrially-zoned area that's all improved. And so all of those industrial uses are all at the doorstep of this site. So with respect to facilitating those existing businesses and their fleet and everything else, we feel like those diesel pumps are actually a benefit, and will facilitate them being on the site. And given the, again, the layout was designed specifically to keep interactions segregated so that those trucks can come in off of Walker Bell, circle around, go straight to the pumps, and then get out on Richie Road, and have no interaction with the vehicle pumps and the pedestrians entering the store, and the car wash is in between the two. So from a layout, circulation, safety, accommodation, marketability standpoint, we think it all works very well.
Thank you. One of the issues here that we can't do anything about is that this I-1 zone, light industrial zone, is directly adjacent to an R-55 zone, directly. There's no transition, and that we cannot change at this point. Okay, so everyone's spoken. I'm going to see if the board has any questions of anyone at this time. I'm going to start with Madam Vice Chair.
No further questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo. You're muted, you're muted, you're muted.
I do have a comment. I empathize or sympathize with Royal Farm with regards to people parking at the pumps. That is a problem. I don't know if the parking, the additional parking will resolve it, but that's a pet peeve of mine, because you try to get into a space and people are in the store shopping. It's the same thing with people in shopping centers who insist on parking along the fire lane and staying there because somebody went in the store, and I don't know what the solution is. But I do know the problem at Royal Farm and other large facilities like that.
Thank you. So if there are no questions, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I again reiterate and thank citizens and public for their participation, as well as Mr. Tedesco and the applicant, and everybody's, not only spirit or willingness to want to come together and work together, but I will be highly, how shall I say, inclined to believe that that will absolutely take place. And so with that, Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DSP-20017 and TCP-2-027-2020, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report, and as further amended by applicant Exhibit Number Three. In addition to ensuring that the resolution codifies the two proffered conditions offered by the applicant, to include removal of the sign on the back of the building, in addition to ensuring that the appropriate infrastructure is in place for the EV charging vehicles. And Madam Chair, I'm not sure if this would be appropriate, or to the extent possible, but if the resolution can somehow incorporate, especially as it relates to the two proffered conditions, that they were a direct response to citizens' concerns, so.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second under, I would like to add to the motion ever so slightly to say that after weighing not only the staff report and the presentation today, but all the seven exhibits, the findings and the concerns raised by the seven exhibits, and as Mr. Johnson today, I think we really delved deep into these citizens' concerns that were raised, and have our express our position on them after weighing each and every item that was expressed either verbally today or in our seven opponent exhibits today, that that be included amongst the findings, that would thereafter be reflected in the resolution. If the motion maker and seconder accept that?
I accept it.
Okay, thank you. So is there any additional discussion? I would just add the one thing under additional discussion. We've said it before, but Mr. Tedesco, you, first of all, you did a nice job of sheltering Mr. Bambridge today, so we didn't get to hear from him directly, we heard from you, but that's what you're here for. But Mr. Bambridge is on the line, and he's hearing these concerns. It is imperative that you stay in touch with this community. Thank you. You've committed to it, but we just want to reiterate. All in favor of the motion, Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
The ayes have a four-zero. Mr. Johnson, please, you do see we endeavor to address your concerns, and please stay in contact with Mr. Tedesco. Mr. Hunt?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Hunt, is there any additional business to come before the planning board today?
There are no additional business items before the planning board today.
Planning board is adjourned. Please stay safe, everyone, and please just remember, it is National Gratitude Month. Thank you. Planning board is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Be safe.
Be safe.